I call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Carrabelle City Commission. It is Thursday, August 7th. We're in the Carrabelle City Hall Chambers and it is 6:00 P.M. If everyone could please stand for the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for the wonderful life and gifts and blessings that you give us on a daily basis. Oftentimes, we as humans, we have, we overlook some of these things and do not give you the grace and glory for what you do give us. Again, this afternoon in our meeting here and working for the business of the citizens of Carrabelle, give us your wisdom and guidance as we follow through here tonight to make wise and beneficial decisions. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to look over the July meeting minutes and our attorney's invoices?
Yeah, I motion to approve July minutes.
Oh, yeah, we didn't get...
We don't have any invoices.
Okay. We'll save that for next time. So Commissioner Pedrick motions to approve the July minutes and Commissioner Walden seconds. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do we have any public comment? Okay. We'll move to our commissioner reports. Commissioner Pedrick?
Just a reminder that school starts back Monday for all the students, so give yourself a little bit of extra time in the morning and in the afternoon as we will have students on the roadways going back and forth.
Thank you. Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Milander?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Gray?
Nothing this far, ma'am.
Okay, I have a short report. Next Friday, August 15th at 9:00 a.m. is the next Team Franklin Board Meeting. Mr. Bill Williams had planned on being here tonight, but he had a conflicting schedule, but I just wanted to extend an invitation to all of our commissioners and anyone else who may be interested to attend our next meeting. Our meetings are held at the School Board Building in the Old Brown Elementary School in East Point, and again, that's next Friday at 9:00 a.m. As your mayor and a local business owner, I've been thinking of ways to help our local businesses during one of our slowest tourist months this September. I came up with doing a Locals Appreciation Month for September. Each business who is interested in participating, please contact me and let me know what specials or sales you'll be offering, and I'll create a flyer to share and add the info to the Forgotten Coast website. This would be the perfect time to get our locals out to businesses while we aren't so flooded with the tourist traffic and show them our appreciation by offering discounts and specials just for them. I'm open to any ideas and feedback also, so just reach out to me. We'll get it going. Thank you. And our staff reports. We'll start with our city attorney, Mr. Hartman.
Yes, I have some good news for the commission is we prevailed in the truck route case. The judge found that we had the right to regulate truck traffic and that our signage was adequate, so the police, I know they have been keeping an eye on it, but they can absolutely vigorously enforce the truck route ordinance at this point, and so all's well that ends well with that. It was a lot of effort and now we, yep, we, it was upheld by the court.
Thank you.
The second item was something that we had talked about before, which was authorizing the $2,500 to be paid for Lot 10 on a half block at the north end of the cemetery that a gentleman was trying to, Mr. Richardson was trying to close out an estate of a sister, and she had owned this half block that got involved in the cemetery. And I talked to him about the result from our meeting and what he's, what he, he just wants to close out the estate, what he offered, and I just wanted to make sure we're okay with this, is he said, hey, I will, if you, if you guys pay the closing costs, the $2,500, I'll just deed you the entire half block, so Lot 10 plus the other lots that fall off into the, fall off there, but I didn't see a problem with that. I can just prepare the deed and closing docs, but just wanted to get approval from the commission on that.
Do we need a motion on that?
I'll motion to approve it.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Milander. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, my Commissioner Gray. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. That's perfect, thank you.
Good, good. I'll work with Courtney to get that wrapped up, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. And next is our city administrator.
All right, Russell got me our rate study information this morning, like yesterday afternoon. So I'm gonna ask that we have a special meeting to go over the rate study information. I sent it out to Charlie today, and I've sent it to Keisha so that the staff can review it, and if we have any recommendations for Russell to make any changes, but then I'll send it out to you guys, and y'all will have plenty of time to review it. I'd like to do it before we start getting really big into the water and sewer budget because we need to know kind of where we're at. And I'd like for it to be a special meeting and not just a workshop so that we can make...
Make decisions.
Decisions.
We're, we're already doing a special meeting Tuesday, right?
A CRA meeting.
Would it be feasible to do one after that for this, since everybody will be there?
It's up to you guys. If y'all think you've got time to review it between now and Tuesday.
Can you send it out to us tonight, our first thing in the morning, so that we have it?
I will.
Would that be enough time for you guys if we do it on next Tuesday after the special CRA meeting?
Will you be available?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with that. The special CRA meeting should only take about 30 minutes, right?
I believe so. We just need to go over them to the two bids for the sidewalk project and the paving project and what our options are.
Okay, so do we want to schedule it for four?
That, that's worse for me.
Is that good with you guys? Okay.
Do we need a motion to schedule it? Are we good?
Yes, special meeting.
I make a motion to schedule a special commission meeting next Tuesday at 4:00 P.M.
And that's the 12th.
The 12th.
4:00 P.M. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pedrick and second by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
See, my other announcement was we're having a special CRA meeting on Tuesday. And I'd also like to announce to the public that on the 13th and the 16th of this month, the water and sewer is gonna have an open house, and that's for anyone to come out. Charlie, I'll give you a tour of our facilities, our water plant and our sewer plant, and that is from 9:00 to 12:00.
Anything else?
That is all.
Okay, Ms. Keisha, would you like to go over some dates for us?
Yes, I'll start with upcoming meetings. I'll guess the 19th will be CRA, a regular CRA, other than the ones Courtney just announced. A regular CRA, August 21st will be, it's a tentative P and Z. I don't have anything for it yet. The Sep- September 1st is Labor Day. We'll, City Hall will be closed. September 4th is our next regular city meeting, and we need to have some budget, budget workshops and our tentative and final budget meetings. So for the budget workshop, I was looking at August the 28th, and is that good with everybody?
What time would it be?
5:01. We try to keep them all at the same time.
Okay, I am good with that, if it's at 5:00.
I'm good.
And then our...
That's August 28th.
August 28th, that's a Thursday.
5:01, okay.
Our tentative, tentative budget hearing is scheduled for September 11th at 5:01, and that'll go out on your trim notices when those get mailed as well.
Okay.
And then the final budget hearing will be September 23rd at 5:01.
These are all 5:01. That's the 28th, the 11th, and the 23rd?
Yes.
Seems like we have more. Is that it? Oh, CRA.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did CRA.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Now, if that's all, that should fill your calendars up.
Yay! Okay, we'll move on to our engineering report for Minovia with Mr. Russell Large.
All right, thank you. Our Landarc East and West Sewer Project is back under construction. Travis is out doing inspections on that work. I do have an update on the cemetery, but I'll save that to last, if that's okay. The request for proposals for lobbyists has been advertised, and that proposal, those proposals are due on 28 August 1:30 at City Hall. On Baywood, we did contact DOT. They don't have those draft agreements quite ready, but she said possibly next week she would have those ready. We are doing some miscellaneous work on the water and sewer, operation and maintenance manual preparations, power outage, contingency plan, and those are items that are required by the permit. And we did conduct a wastewater treatment plant condition assessment with Charlie and identified capital improvement projects out there, and there is a permit modification that is needed for the headworks. Okay, those are our active projects. We do have some grant awards. I won't go through the entire list, but just to highlight a couple of those. The Request for Inclusion with DEP SRF for Well 5, that priority meeting is August the 13th, and the award is expected within 90 days of August 13th. Also, on the sewer side, that, those dates are the same for the, for the sewer projects. We do have some upcoming funding applications for the citywide stormwater improvements and specific stormwater improvements and wastewater, and those are gonna be later in the year. Those awards will be later in the year. Okay, if we can take a look at the cemetery, we did, we did take a look at the, the changes that were requested and developed a plan for that, which I think Courtney's trying to pull up here.
It's going slow, but I'm getting it.
Okay, that's the, yes, okay. All right. So we were, we were able to shift things a little more towards the east than what you saw before and create a buffer space there to the property to the west. In fact, that's a, that's a 12-foot buffer there. There's some existing vegetation that would remain, but that provides a, a significant buffer. That's basically open space or a landscape area. That's, that's the primary difference in what, in what, in what you've seen before, but, but I think it addresses the property owner's concern.
And how many lots would this, 68? What?
There's 85, but he's got almost 85 double lots, so that's really 170. The only thing I had mentioned to Russell was this last row here. I'd like to make it to singles.
Right. Perfect. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Russell regarding this?
Okay.
Do you have anything else for us?
That's all I had today.
Okay.
I do have a question for Mr. Russell regarding the cemetery.
Okay.
Ryan Jobb, is there any plans other than the handheld little trench that was dug?
Absolutely. So I'm talking with Courtney, and I don't know if this is a CRA issue or commission issue. Either way...
A CRA, but...
Either, either way, and talking with Courtney, the, the city has some pipe available, and so we thought we would coordinate with streets and see if we can get that pipe installed under that driveway, and then install a, a small inlet on the other side to help capture that, that area better.
Awesome, thank you.
So that's, that's the, that's the current plan. Now, again, that's a, this was, this, this was never intended to be...
Correct.
This was never intended to be the final project, but, but that was certainly aid in pulling water to that, to that pond. We did dig that trench, and I actually went out and, and did some myself after, and I physically, with my eyes, witnessed water flowing into that trench from the road. So, so we did make that adjustment, but I, I still think that a, a pipe in an inlet there would be an improvement and certainly at a lower cost.
Awesome, thank you.
And the ultimate plan is, there's, there's some other grant applications that we have outstanding. That, that would be the, the ultimate plan to, to make the improvements there.
Right. This was never 100% fixed. It was just supposed to be to slow it down and help us out until we could get a grant.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to our advisory board reports. Ms. Tamra, would you like to tell us about the waterfront partnership?
Thank you, Keisha. I appreciate that. So I gave, you all got my report after you had left wherever you were reading stuff, so it's, but it's, it's really pretty basic. The, the most important announcement there is that the International Coastal Cleanup for the World is September 20th, 8:30 in the morning until 11:30, and that Lori Gilbertson and I will be coordinating with, down at the pavilion like we always have, and we'll have a, a big dumpster, and we'll be glad to have people to come that morning and bring us, or bring your garbage from home and put it in there, bring, kind of fill up the dumpster. That's the most important thing, filling up that dumpster. So, but basically from around the river is where we're, but all the area in town is considered around the river.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll be glad to take that. This month, as it was for many other museums in the, in the county, is a month to write a bunch grants, and we particularly have completed a museum operations grant to the TDC that we get just to help us keep the doors open for the Carrabelle History Museum. We have to match that, and we, we match a lot of it with volunteer time, with the value of volunteer time. The state of Florida gives a very substantial monetary amount for every, every hour that volunteers work, which just thrills me that we're, we're doing it and it's wonderful, but we also get money value for it in a way, and that's just fabulous. So we, we had the operations grant, three of them's grant, grants which includes our annual culture crawl, the speakers and exhibits that we do, one in the winter, spring, one in the summer, and fall. And then we have just also applied for a infrastructure grant to the TDC to get the front of the Justice Building spruced up. It needs pressure washing, and the porch needs painting, and the iron needs replacing, all that... that stuff. So we're gonna, and get a big old limb off the back. So we tried to pick all the real expensive stuff and get them to pay for it. So it sounds like as long as it passes the meeting next week, and we're counting on you, Mayor, for making that happen. So it should be something we can do to improve Carabelle through that money, too.
You've got my vote.
Good. Count them for one. I got two, I think, at least, so. And that's basically, we're working on, we're still pursuing the notion of doing oral histories for Carabelle residents who've been here all their life and who've lived here in their, in their 80s. And we're trying to find them before they pass away. And it was the gander of dying this week just added heat to that project. We gotta, gotta get these people on tape talking. But it, it is a little more than just showing up at their house and saying, hi, you know, you've got to like have a plan. So we're working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to gather some good audio talking, but mostly just information that they have is valuable. So it's wonderful. We're gonna start with Uncle Cecil. So now you got to keep Uncle Cecil going and healthy.
My miss. If you can give me a list of questionnaire, of questions that you'd like, I can go ahead and get started and I can record them.
Oh, what a fabulous idea.
Because I go every day after work out there, so.
Okay. Well, fabulous. See, we solved the problem right there. Okay, so anybody that we desperately need volunteers to give us a couple hours a week or a couple hours every other week, which would be a big help for us. So if you know anybody that's looking for something to do now that it's not so deadly hot, maybe they can come and sit in the air conditioning and enjoy that for a couple hours a week. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tam.
And you don't, do you have anything for us, Steve?
Hello? Yeah. My name is Stephen Allen. I represent the Gregory Lighthouse. I do have one announcement. On the 30th of August is our, our fins up on the Forgotten Coast concert. We have two bands. We have a band coming at 4 o'clock called Tropical Sands Band, Tropic Sands Band. And then we have Rick McBurry at 7 o'clock PM. So please come out and see us. Thank you so much. That whole thing is about Jimmy Buffett. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. For this one, do I have to do the Cal? Okay. We'll move into our quasi judicial hearing. And item number one is approved, disapproved, final site plan for SOS Galley at 90 Tallahassee Street, and I will be recusing myself from the vote because the applicant is a Leesee of mine. Mr. Sean O'Shea?
Well, do I need to answer any questions or, nothing's changed from the previous meeting?
And was this approved through P and Z, Ms. Keisha?
Yes, you now may stop.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melinder and a second by Commissioner Pedrick. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries? Thank you. And we have no new business and no old business, so would you like to?
I do. I'd feel remiss if I didn't. I've sat here and thought about it, go back to the attorney's report. I'd like to thank the attorney and our chief of police for the great job that they did working on that truck route ordinance. They spent a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of probably sleepless nights. But anyway, they, they put a lot of effort into it. I publicly want to thank them for the work that they did. And I may deny Dan's invoice when he sends it in. But anyway, thank you, guys. Appreciate you a lot.
You're welcome. And I'm, I apologize for not mentioning because obviously it was a team effort. Russell provided expert testimony-
Thank you, Russell.
-that was cited by the judge as part of the basis for the, for the ruling. The chief provided great testimony. Officer Murray-
Officers.
And Officer Stevens as well.
Yep. All involved.
Yep.
Thank you all. I know-
And Keisha and Courtney were there.
They were there, too.
I kind of take them for granted, but they did a good job. Yeah. So it was a full Carabelle team effort.
But it was good. Thank you. Everybody.
Mr. Russell, did you have something to add?
Yes, and, and I apologize also. Going back to Ryan Drive, I, I need to give Travis credit because he was out there and did the majority of that work to get that trench dug in, which, which took some effort. So Travis, Travis did the line share that work.
Thank you, Travis. All right. Anything else this evening? We are adjourned.